Welcome. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the special meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, December 6, 2022. As I said, it's a special meeting, and we will start off first with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have asked Counselor Sue Ann Mello to lead us in that. Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will turn some time over to our Clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
And Councilmember Walker is in transit, so we do expect him shortly. We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. Item number one on our -- well, first, the council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First is on our consent agenda, item is one, A, regular meeting minutes of November 15th, and of course, special meeting minutes on November 28th, both 2022. Any comments or questions about these or discussion? Can we have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Still moved.
I'll second.
There you go.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, agenda item, A, comments from exiting council members. Of course, this is a sad evening tonight, and I'm starting it already. I'm sorry. But we, as part of the political process, our council is replaced every two years, and so we have some council members that are moving on to bigger and better things. And we will say goodbye to them tonight, but we'd like to give them some time. First to Sue Ann. Mello, would you like to take some time?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to quote Winnie the Pooh. "How lucky am I to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard?" This has been an absolute pleasure and honor to serve the city of Kingman. I want to thank this council and the mayor. The city is being left in good hands, that's for sure. I want to thank the past counselors David Wade and Travis Langenfelder, and of course, our past Mayor Jen Miles. I wish she was here tonight. I hope she's watching, but she's been a great mentor to me and a tireless servant to the city of Kingman, and I thank her for that. To our new incoming counselors, being a counselor is a special recipe of being an independent thinker, a team player, and being the voice for your community, for your constituents that voted you in. And the mayor often reminded us to check ourselves because it's not our personal agenda. It's not our desires. We are the voice for the people that voted us in. And you're not going to please all the people all the time, but you have to vote according to what the majority wants. So just keep that in mind. I don't think I have anything else to say. Just from the bottom of my heart, again, thank you to the city of Kingman for voting me in and allowing me this opportunity to serve. I'm going to go on to serve as county treasurer come January, and I just, again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue Ann. Deana.
All right. Rule number one, there's no crying in politics, okay? So we have to stop that now. Here we are, four years of service. You've all put up with me and deserve a great big thank you from -- for everybody. I've made some amazing friends, and it has been such an honor to work with this council and the previous. I hate you. It's just been an honor all the way around. The city staff is amazing, great people. I just have enjoyed every minute with them. I encourage everyone to continue the good fight for Kingman. This community deserves better. Good isn't good enough for Kingman. Great is what we need to be striving for. We are not mediocre, and we do not deserve mediocre. Make everyone step up to the plate, council. Make everyone step up to the plate. And please, you guys do the same. Keep my handle on that. With that, thanks for letting me serve you.
Thanks to both these great women. I actually have, over the last four years since we were all elected at the same time, have developed quite a relationship. Basically, I'm their older brother, and they keep me in line. You know how that sister's brother's relationship can be. This is true, but I appreciate their example, and especially of service to the community and thinking of how they can serve others, be it places to represent Kingman. It's huge. And our incoming counselors that will be coming in, you have big shoes to fill. I know you'll be able to do it. These women have set great examples for all of us, and I truly appreciate them. So on that, we have a special presentation for you, and I'm going to -- Annie, how would you like -- don't we stand down in front?
Yes.
Don't we do that? And Colleen? Actually, both of you.
You can get your back up.
Sue Ann and Deana.
You got it?
That's incredible.
Okay.
And we'll give it a good box of that.
They are.
Yes.
On both these plaques, well, actually, beautiful pieces of glass of Deana and Sue Ann, I'm going to read Deana's. It says, presented to Deana announcing for Sue Ann Mello. Thank you for your commitment and dedication to the city's council member 2018, 2022. And once again, appreciate your service. We now have the privilege of turning some time over to our city magistrate, Judge Jeffrey Singer, and he will administer the oath of office to our newly affected elected officials.
Right, Mayor, I guess we'll start with you.
Okay. Do you want me to come down there?
However you want to do it.
I will do it.
Exactly just did.
I know.
Four months ago. Yeah, two months.
Did you want to do them all together?
I'm going to do the mayor first, and then all the council members together. So, all right. Where do you want us?
Fantastic.
All right. Got my good side?
You know it. Always, Judge, always.
All right.
The back of your head.
I can witness.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Kingman City Mayor.
Kingman City Mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Great.
All right. And then if we can have our two newest council members and our sort of newest council members.
Sort of.
Sort of. Sort of, yes.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, if you all would raise your right hands, please. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Shout out.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Kingman City Council member.
Of Kingman City Council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Great. Thank you, gentlemen. One quick thing I would like to share with you before we adjourn, and I texted former Mayor Jen Miles today just to check in and see how she was doing, and she wanted me to share this with you. And she shared that I am being discharged later today, still very weak and fighting to bring sodium levels up. Everything seems moving in the right direction. So that is such great news. She said also, please give my deep appreciation for the kindness, prayers, and continued prayers that everyone is offering. So I would like us to keep her, once again, remind everybody to keep her in our prayers, that she continues to heal. And as was already stated by our counselors Mello and Nelson, that she has been a great example to me also, and I am amazed at the energy that she put into serving as mayor. And once again, great service by this fine woman, and just wanted to let you know, all know, and give you an update about her. Upon that, this meeting will be adjourned until 5 o'clock.
Thank you, Annie. Our invocation tonight, I do not see our pastor that was assigned, that had volunteered to do it, and so I have asked my wife, Darcy Watkins, to give an invocation. If we could all stand during that, and then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to the members of the City Council and all the staff that are here at this meeting. We are grateful for all those participants that are in the congregation. We are grateful for the hours of service that they give, and we're grateful for the time that has been given before this meeting to make it possible. We ask thee that thou would be here with us in this meeting, that those participants that speak will know that thy love and support is with them, and we pray that those hearing their words will be able to understand the meaning that they are trying to convey. We ask thee that thy love and tender mercies will be with our former Mayor Jen Miles as she is recovering. Please bless her that she may do so speedily, and that continued prayers and thoughts will be with her. We are grateful to thee for all that thou does bestow upon us, and the blessings that thou does give to us, and we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A 3, to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item 1, Appointments. 1A, Discussion and Appointment of Vice Mayor. As we all know, with a new council, a new vice mayor is selected among the council members, and so this will be the time to discuss this. I first would like to share with you the importance of a vice mayor, and actually, Jen Miles wrote this best last time, and so I am going to share part, I'm going to read part of what she wrote down. "Most realize that the vice mayor serves as a backup for the mayor, assuming certain duties if the mayor is unavailable. The most obvious is that of presiding at council meetings, but beyond that, it can be representing the city as a stand-in for the mayor at various regional or local events or committees. Throughout the year, the vice mayor may act as a spokesperson for the community at public or legislative hearings. The vice mayor, along with other members of council, represent the city on various regional and local committees. I think it is important that the mayor and the vice mayor need to be able to consult together on city issues, so that both are informed on issues being addressed, and the vice mayor can participate or step in as needed at a moment's notice." Wise words from our former mayor. I, too, would add, and since I've been, was sort of filling in for Mayor Miles since she became sick back in January, and was able to attend a lot of public functions, and in the meantime, she was always attending the Zoom functions, which, once again, I stand in awe that she was able, she kept active and participating, and a great example to me. But I was able to attend public functions. Sometimes, things would come up, and then I would ask my fellow council members here to fill in and help out when I was not able to go to some of those meetings, and I truly, once again, appreciate that. And I think all of us, at some time, as we serve here on council, will have that opportunity, and so I'm giving you a warning, how's that, that I might ask you to do that. So, but tonight, we need to select a vice mayor, and I would, we would like to entertain nominations, or those who might be interested in being vice mayor to speak up, but you can nominate yourself, too. But if there are any of you who would like to do so, please, let's start a discussion.
I'll jump out.
Yes, counselor.
And say, I would, personally, I'm too busy, and I don't think I'd be the right person for the job at this time, but I've, I really like to, I'd like to see Cherish Samley possibly be the vice mayor. She attends every function I can think of, or I see the paper afterwards, or talk to her. She attends quite a bit. She stays very educated on all of our topics, and I think she'd be a fine candidate for it.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have, do we need to have a second on that, Carl, since that was a nomination, or not, really?
We'll have a vote.
We'll have a vote, and that'll accomplish that.
And I'm not sure if she's interested in it, but I'd throw her.
This is true. Well, we will, we'll turn some time over to her, then, but let's see if there are any other people, any of the other members of council that would like to be vice mayor. Please put your name forward, or nominate somebody. Okay. It just did. I don't think we even need to do a piece of paper, do we?
No.
I don't think so. Yes, Cherish, we'd like to turn some time over to you.
Well, thank you. I think. Counselor Walker, I will accept the nomination. It would be my pleasure and honor to represent the city and stand in whenever necessary, or called up to duty by the mayor, so I will accept. Thank you.
Okay. So basically, we have a motion. All those in favor of, do we need?
Need a motion in a second.
Now we need a motion. Okay.
In a second.
Can we have a motion to have Cherish Samley as our vice mayor of City of Kingman? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations. And Cherish is actually, has filled in for me a couple of times. Even this last Saturday, I ended up having to go to Phoenix, and I called her and said, Cherish, I'm not going to be there on Saturday afternoon at the, Saturday evening, so I appreciate you doing that. Okay, but now it's official. Okay, item number two, Awards and Recognition. 2A, Comments by Newly Elected Council Members. And Mr. Pat, we will start with you, if that's all right.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. Well, I've had a long journey to get here, and I guess this journey started back in law school. As the bar examination and graduation was approaching, I started thinking to myself, what am I going to do with my life? Where am I going to go? One of my professors actually has family out here in Kingman, and he told me, look to Kingman. They're always looking for good people willing to put their best foot forward. I looked into it and found that not only is Kingman looking for good people, but it's comprised of good people putting their best foot forward on a day-to-day basis. I was fortunate enough to become a prosecutor here in town at an amazing office, working with amazing people. Over the course of the years as a prosecutor, I've had my minds change, my mind changed, different perceptions, different beliefs arise, and one thing that I've come to believe is that idle hands make the devils work. One good way not to have idle hands is to consume oneself in productive and valuable work, work that one finds meaningful and enjoyable, work where one can do well for themselves by doing well for others. Over the next four years, I will strive to create economic opportunities, with the hopes that those who are in Kingman or who come to Kingman can find a position, place, or if we even dare call it a passion, that provides a sense of purpose, meaning, esteem, community, and financial stability. When I look at Kingman, I see a rising sun with an infinite amount of possibilities and an equal amount of incredible opportunities, opportunities and betterment that I will strive to bring to fruition. Many of you who are familiar with me on the campaign, from the campaign trail already know my spiel, focusing on repairing the roads, supporting our emergency services, and economic growth. Once again, I'm here, ready to put my best foot forward in serving you honorably and faithfully for the next four years. Thank you.
Please.
I didn't prepare any remarks, but I've been in Kingman 12 years now. I love this city. I appreciate everyone that voted for me and the opportunity to serve. I bring a little different perspective to council, being retired, and 42 years in industry, and then 12 years retired, so I will do my absolute best to serve the city well. Thank you.
Thank you, Smiley. Sean?
Hello again. My last one was a little short, but just to let you know a little bit more about myself, I did grow up in Kingman. My whole life, I have given everything I got to anything and everything I do. I currently hold three jobs now. I succeed in all of them, and I take pride in what I do, and I take pride in this city, and I will give my utmost to make sure that that continues, and people will be proud to be a Kingmanite. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thanks to all of you, and basically, I would say, I would echo all of what you've said, and, except for the 42 years retired, Smiley. Anyway, I'm not there yet, but not far behind. You know, we have lived in Kingman 34 years and raised six children here. When we moved here, our oldest was eight years old, and it has been a great city to raise children in, to raise, to have a family, and I think that's our goal as council, is making our city more attractive to families, making it more livable for all our citizens. And we have the opportunity to help do that. It's not just a one person, it's not just the mayor, it's not just the vice mayor, or any of each individual counselors, it's all of us working together to make this city great, and I appreciate the comments that have been said. I do want to thank those who helped. Well, first, most importantly, I want to thank my wife, and the great example she is to me, and I would be lost without her in my life, so I love her very much, and I appreciate that. My children that support and love me, and all of you that have been examples to me on how to serve and how to serve our fellow men, whether it be in civic life, or our brother and sister, family, whatever, that's the most important thing we can do is serve our fellow men. So I appreciate you all being part of this process. I do want to thank those who actually even, Mayor Miles, that suggested that, when she said she would not, was not going to be able to run for mayor, that she suggested I do that. And once again, I appreciate her example, and I appreciate those good individuals that, that helped me do everything I needed to do to get elected. So, once again, I appreciate all that, and I appreciate all of you being here and actively participating in our city. And once again, thank you. Moving on to our agenda, item 2B, Citizens Academy Participant Recognition for Fall of 2022 Class, and I will turn some time over to Manager Foggan.
our second graduating group. We had our first one this spring, second one this fall, and they've been so successful. We're looking forward to doing them twice a year, spring and fall, so coming soon, we'll be doing our spring, our Spring Academy, but tonight, we're here to recognize the folks that completed at least 90% of the sessions, and so with that, what we would like to do is, we have a certificate and our yellow Citizen Academy polo that's become kind of our tradition for anybody who gets through the academy, so we will be handing those out. So when we call your name, if you'll come out and get your certificate and your shirt, and then stay standing along the front here, and we would love to get a picture with, with everybody once we're done with that. So, with that, Ms. Annie.
All right. Our first participant is Barbara Carpenter. Next is Jenny Carpenter. Participant David Dale was not able to attend this evening, so we'll be sure to get his stuff to him. Timothy Grape.
Moments like this are the best part of being on council. It truly is. It's very rewarding and to recognize our citizens in our city. Item 3, Call to the Public: Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Clerk Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not received anybody that asked to register to join us via Zoom this evening. No written comments were received in advance, and I have not had anybody in chamber sign up to address council.
Okay, thank you. Item number four then on our agenda is Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I hope all of us have had a chance to take a look at the consent agenda, and is there anything that needs to be polled or discussed? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion then approving our consent agenda, items A through E. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number five, Old Business, we have none. Item number six, 6A, Consideration of Resolution Number 5442, to extinguish the 16-foot public utility easement granted to the city of Kingman. A request from Martin Swanee Auto Center Incorporated, property owner, and Donald Ward, applicant for the extinguishment, abandonment of a public utility easement. The easement was granted to the city of Kingman and accepted on January 4, 1999. The current parcel number assigned to the property is APN 324-10-017B, and is located within the 4,000 block of Stockton Hill Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on November 8, 2021, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the extinguishment of the subject easement. Staff recommends approval. Yes. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Honored to be here. Your first item of new business in your time here, so it's an honor. As the mayor mentioned, this is a request to abandon a public utility easement on property at about the 4,000 block, 4075 North Stockton Hill Road. It's a 16-foot wide utility easement that was granted as part of development. The site is currently vacant, and there is a pending permit for new construction for a auto dealership there. This is the subject property here. The line in yellow is, well, first of all, the purple line, if that's what color you want to call it, that's a former water line, 8-inch water line that extended to the west and terminated in what that little red dot there was, a fire hydrant. The yellow represents the extent of the easement. It's 16 feet wide by 185 feet. And, as I mentioned, it's currently undeveloped, but pending building permit. It's commercially zoned, and the general plan also designates it for commercial. There's a single-family residential subdivision to the west, single-family zoning. The PUE, Public Utility Easement, was granted in 1998. And per a demolition permit with the city engineering department, that line, that water line and hydrant have been removed. Property is generally flat, ready for development. No public utilities are in the easement any longer. The transportation, it's accessed fully from Stockton Hill Road. We noticed on the site and mailed, sent out mailed notice to property owners, surrounding property owners, and no comments or objections were received. Department and agency comments, there were no objections to the proceeding with abandonment of the easements. And as I mentioned, the lines have been, the infrastructure has been removed. In our street and sidewalks, development rules and regulations, it outlines when, how we can abandon public utility easements or rights of way, and so those steps are there. This is considered part of a right-of-way easement and is eligible for abandonment because it is no longer needed and there is no infrastructure in there. The planning commission, at their November 8 meeting, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the abandonment of the easement, and staff has prepared Resolution Number 5442 if you wish to act on it tonight, and staff would recommend approval. And I'm going to stand for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
I do not have any comments. I support this item. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this one pretty quickly. They had no concerns. This is a local business that's going to improve the property, and so it sailed right through.
Counsel, any comments or questions about this action?
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 5442.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Congratulations to our new council members. It is wonderful to welcome you. We have what we normally have as a kickoff for legislative, obviously, we're always dealing with legislative things at the city level, but the state legislature kicks off their efforts in January. And so this is part of an annual report that we do, trying to make sure that you all in the community are aware of what our legislative priorities are, what we're looking at. And we actually have a great opportunity tonight, so we have, we're going to cover a couple of different things. First of all, we are fortunate to have our newly elected representative. Representative Gillette is here, and we've asked him if he wouldn't mind introducing himself to you, and just to let you know kind of what he's going to be looking for and what his priorities are going to be for this legislative session. Obviously, he gets started in January for the first time, so he has been drinking from the fire hose, if you will, but we've asked him if he wouldn't get us kicked off on this, and then after his comments, we'll move on to the second part of this. So Representative.
Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Foggan, we have discussed our legislative agenda. As you can imagine, with the current state of political affairs and the election, a lot of things that we anticipated were going to be an easy fight are now going to be a challenge. So first thing on the agenda is to protect the 2%, or the 2.2% flat tax and the voucher program. That's something we know that the Democrats were looking at to change, and we want to ensure that the taxes stay low and the school program stays as it is with the current bill that passed and the law that's intact. Going forward, though, we've discussed this, actually today, we talked about, our plan moving forward is to still fight for those dollars for infrastructure, fight for the road dollars, and everything that we wanted to do. We're still going to propose these pieces of legislation, everything that was talked about with the rural finances, water, border, we're still going to put these things forward. If they don't make it past the governor's desk, we'll move to put them on the ballot, so every person in the state can weigh in on this issue. We have a caucus meeting on the 14th, and we'll provide more of an update once we go to a caucus meeting and figure out what our direction will be with the new governor and the new governor's priorities. We're obviously going to have to shift what we originally thought was going to be our instant wins to maybe a little backtracking and blocking of some of the new initiatives we don't feel are good for LD 30 in our area. Pending your questions, we really don't have much until after the caucus meeting, but I'll be glad to answer any question. We've discussed this at length, we've discussed today, but if you want to bring it in the public, we are seeking to bring business here. We're recruiting as we speak. That was this afternoon's project, and our mini-caucus today was all about keeping the tax cut in place. Other than that, it's, I am drinking from the fire hose. It has been nonstop since the primary. For those of you that don't know, we didn't, those candidates that didn't have a primary challenge, or didn't have a challenge after the primary, we were pretty much told, hey, you're going to go to work. We need to start moving forward now. So a lot of those things that we put together, expecting a friendly governor to come in and just move our bills quickly, that has obviously changed. So some of these things are bipartisan issues. The border, the water, these are bipartisan things that we would hope that everybody can agree on, and we can still move those forwards. Some of the infrastructure, that is also bipartisan issue that we need to push forward, not only for Kingman, but Havasu Bullhead and all of LD 30. We, I mean, we know the state of our roads, we know the state of our state highways, and they're, the state of the state is not very good when it comes to the roads. So that's something we hope that we can move forward first. That was a middle agenda item that has now moved to the top, and that's a way I think we're going to move forward until we know for sure. But we will provide a legislative update in writing after the caucus meeting. Questions?
John, most importantly, thank you for being willing to represent us and represent our cities.
I will do the best that I can. You know the reasons I got into this, and it was to limit government, to keep the people in charge, and that's what I'm going to try and do, and I'll do my best at it. So thank you all very much. Thank you, folks. I have a Zoom call in 15 minutes, so thank you very much. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
All right. It's wonderful to have representation at the state. We're looking forward to working closely with Representative Gillette, of course, Biassucci and Sonny Borelli, as well as they've, those two senior legislators have actually accepted pretty important leadership roles at the state legislature, so we're excited to be represent, have a local representative that wants to talk to us, as well as representatives who are in leadership roles. So congratulations to them. The second part of our legislative update is more of what we're planning on doing, and one of the things that we as a rural community have a pretty large challenge with and being, I don't want to say a long way away from the state Capitol, but far enough away where we can't just jump into a meeting when we need to. And so it became really clear to the city that we needed to have somebody that could do that for us, knew what our priorities were, that we were actively working with. So we work with the Dorn Policy Group. Tom Dorn and his team represent us. They, when there's an important testimony that needs to be given and it's last minute, it's Tom or Cole, and they're there to represent us. They are overseeing and making sure that our issues are being heard by state legislators. And so what, it's my pleasure to actually welcome Tom Dorn to speak to you about this upcoming legislative session, what we're kind of expecting to see, what our priorities are, what we as a city are going to be looking at and working for and maybe against, if that is the case. Hopefully, not too much against, but we do have some things that we do need to protect on a regular basis when the state legislature gets together. So with that, I've asked Tom to walk you through a legislative update for our 2023 session, so Mr. Dorn.
Mr. Foggan, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, and congratulations to the three of you on your election. My name is Tom Dorn, and it's nice to meet you, look forward to working with you closely, as well as under Mr. Foggan's guidance and direction. And yes, he does say, sometimes every now and then, it's last minute, Tom, get to that committee right now and say this. Like, okay, got it. So good to be here. We'll be very quick and to the point on some of the issues, try to stay away from all the color commentary, that I tend to go on and on and be happy to answer any questions about all of that offline, but I just want to stick to where the facts are in this new world that we're in. And I just, I'm sorry that Mr. Gillette had to leave, I'm just thrilled that he won. It is, while Sonny Borelli is Senator and Leo Biassucci do a great job representing the entire district, there's nothing like having somebody in your community at the Capitol. And I've been doing this a long time, and I've seen that's how it is. And so it's very important moving forward that Kingman, even if you have to single-shot, you get somebody in there, because you need someone at the Capitol for a community this size and of this importance, or the crossroads that you have within the state, you're very important. So I look forward to helping him help all of you, so we'll be supporting him. It seems like the session was so long that I was just here giving a legislative update, but now we're going to be talking about the preview. And the more things change, the more they stay the same. You saw, the only thing we've changed on this slide is the, well, that's 2022 right there, but that should have been changed. That's the 2023 legislature. It's the exact same legislature. 31 Republicans, 29 Dems, 16, 14 in the Senate. Republicans have control. The only thing that changes is that you now have a Democrat governor. And so while these Republicans are used to being the most powerful person at the Capitol, because they, each of them can hold their vote back to make sure that a majority doesn't pass a bill, they can't do that anymore. Some still think they can already, but that isn't the case, because if there's not at least 10, if there's not at least 10 Democrats on a bill, I don't see the governor signing anything. And I say that based on my experience back, having worked when Janet Politano was governor, working with the Republican legislature. She issued many, many vetoes, so it's going to have to be, many of these bills are going to be worked out and have bipartisan sponsorship if they're going to get through and actually signed. Even if they think they're going to send them up to see what she'll do, they may not even get through the chamber. This is from last session. I already showed you all of this, but just to recap, this is how many bills, take note of, there were four vetoes, and that's not on here, there was only four vetoes. So next year when we're talking, it'll be interesting to see what that number is. But many bills introduced, and with so many freshmen, I hope somebody talks to all the freshmen and says, don't introduce 20 bills. You know, I think that's where we're going to see, some people just tend to want to introduce a lot of bills these days. So we're going to have 1,851 last time. There's the governor, governor, and as you know, the election was certified yesterday by the governor, the attorney general, the secretary of state, and the head of the Supreme Court, and so it is done. And the president did not call the governor during this signing of certification yesterday, as he did in 2020. Here is the, oh, we did have it right. Okay, good. Here's the 2023 legislature, as you can see, nothing has changed. Here are the, here's the leadership. This is interesting. Ben Toma was the, is the Speaker of the House, and that was expected. Warren Peterson from Gilbert, he was up against David Gowan from Sierra Vista, and it's interesting, well, this color commentary, I don't want to get into it. If you want to know how the Senate caucus vote went, I'm happy to tell you all about it. Anyway, three people that were not elected were able to vote, but I can explain a lot to you offline if you want to know more about it. Arizona budget, here is the budget from last year, nearly, I think it was nearly 17, I don't have the exact number on me, but it was well, it was over 15. I think it was 15.8 billion was the budget. And as you can see, the revenues, they kept the budget, we've been very good since we started to do three-year budgeting, as I told you before, at least three-year forecasting. These lines do not get too far apart. Years before, they were wide, very wide apart, and then they'd have mid-year budget cuts. We don't do that anymore as a state, and that's good. Here is the breakdown, so just, I've showed this to you before, but I always want to remind everybody, if people say we don't spend money on education, we do spend money on education. You'll see all of that there for K-12 universities and comm colleges combined there in the reddish tent. These are just some of the bills, major bills that passed uh last year that were, we wanted to list this because um these are, some of these are of interest to uh specifically communities in rural Arizona, rural counties, rural cities. The budget surplus. Okay, we passed this budget already and these are the numbers that are over the four, over the budgeted amount already. And when you add in, I think it's two hundred and twenty-three uh million over for October, our state is doing extremely, extremely well. We have people locating here and it, many people give credit to remember the the Wayfair decision for sale taxes on online purchases, the Wayfair versus South Dakota, your interning. And that Arizona then made it so we are collecting revenue from on sale per um um online purchases. And that happened right before COVID, the state got it done. So that's good. And then also the lowering of our commercial tax rates, uh that has been a boon for for business. And so and as you know, I mean, today down at the cap, I mean, I had to take the back route cuz the president was at the Taiwan Semiconductor Facility. So I seventeen north of the one oh one was all blocked off. It was just crazy. So I had to meander through Sun City to finally get to sixty. So uh anyway, the the president, I guess that shuts everything down. So but quite an event and uh uh our state is doing extremely well. Kingman priorities, uh these are the issues that we've been talking with Mr. Foggan and Colleen regarding the priorities for uh the city of Kingman at the Capitol. Of course, we work in coordination with the League of Cities and Towns. Do not expect to introduce any bills that are clearly just Kingman uh originated bills. But uh these are the issues that we're gonna be focusing on. Of course, uh water continues to be the big, big item and and as, as was indicated earlier, with Sonny Borelli is the Senate Majority Leader and Leo Biassucci is the House Majority Leader. And you got John Gillette is the Vice Chairman of the Government Committee. We're in good spot. Kingman's in a good spot. So and uh also a Democrat governor, she's gonna have the backstop of the cities for the most part. She will protect cities. That's usually what the Democrats have done more than the Republicans because even the Republicans this year created a municipal oversight committee, which is gonna be interesting for the sole purpose. The government usually handles things like that, but municipal oversight just doesn't sound very friendly to the cities and towns, but we'll see where that goes. Uh the water legislation from last year, you've all heard about this already, but wanna highlight it and just for those of you that are 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 new to the council and and just a good reminder to all of us and the citizens and those here today. One point two billion dollar water infrastructure um legislation passed and uh Representative Gina Cobb of Kingman is uh is responsible. She should, um hopefully they will put a fountain somewhere in this town with some water flowing uh from it and name it the Cobb Fountain because uh without her, we would have been flattened. I I was witness to it, I swear. If Regina Cobb was not at the Capitol, we would have been run over on the water issue. So she, if you see her at the grocery store, thank her. Uh I don't think she gets enough credit for what she did on the water. And it, and hopefully the powerhouse that I just indicated we have for the next session, they'll be able to uh continue that wall and protect the state. Uh protect Kingman in Mojave County. The money, where's it gonna go? Uh conservation, money's gonna go towards conservation, two hundred million. There's also the four hundred million that'll go towards water projects. Uh that, and then um uh uh the au- augmentation is another thing where, you know, under augmentation, people will talk about a desalinization plant. We'll see how the commercial, the, how that's gonna happen over time, but it's too expensive right now, as you may already know. The WIFA Board, the Water Infrastructure Financing Board, it's interesting, they wanted to create some mega board that kind of the Arizona Commerce Authority is the one authority that that's gonna help bring economic development to the state. The thought was, let's create the Arizona Water Authority. Well, people just, no one could get, agree to that. Who's gonna be appointed? And in a way, let's just, let's just expand this Water Infrastructure Financing Authority Board that we have. Well, you can call it whatever you want. It's still the power board and it has these major league appointees from the governor, you know, from the governor and it's like, it's right up there with State Transportation Board, the Board of Regents and the Commerce Authority. This is where water decisions are gonna be made. And I saw this during the county legislative summit I was at and some of the people were just appointed. And you should have seen people just lobbying them hard. Oh, we need this project in our county and so it's, we're gonna have to show up and play hard and make sure if you need things for Kingman in Mojave County, you're gonna have to aggressively advocate for what you want. You can't just put, submit an application like the old WIFA maybe and they just, you know, look at the chart and they give it to you. There's gonna be advocacy and politics involved. Initiatives, these are, you already know this, we put the ones that passed in green. Not for Christmas, but for go and don't go. Of note on that is the Fire District's funding. Uh that one did not pass, uh which would have been an extra tax with uh that some districts said they need. Future issues, I already kind of talked about it um a little bit. Well, we didn't really talk about the housing, but that is a major issue. Governor Hobbs has been, you know, while they're, and I I think it's been here, the the committee, the Housing Committee, it did travel the state. I don't know if it came to Kingman or not. But it's a legislative committee and they, they, they're gonna have recommendations um on, on workforce housing and affordable housing and 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 a lot of P and Z changes, planning and zoning in in Colleen and Mr. Foggan had been very clear, what works in Phoenix isn't gonna work here. I know, I got it, I got it. If anything, you have a very relentless staff that likes to remind us to make sure we're doing it right. So but housing, we get it. It's different from downtown Phoenix is different from Kingman on housing issues and homelessness issues. And so groundwater legislation, you know, be very diligent and vigilant on that. We have to remain engaged or, you know, if you're on, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And then local control, uh there's gonna be, and I think with even the, see, that's where just you can't use a blanket statement that just cuz she's a Democrat, she's got our back. She's even proposing some changes of P and planning and zoning from a state level. So we do need to be aware of some central planning that might be attempted by interesting political mixes of home builders and and people that wanna centralize certain things. So sorry, that was a little color commentary. Anyway, uh happy to answer any questions and uh hopefully we covered everything that that Mr. Foggan and and Colleen wanted covered for all of you. And uh we're down there every day and happy to answer any questions through them. And and we look forward to seeing you all down at the Capitol when you come down. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Well, Tom, thanks again for being here and of course, uh representing Kingman. We appreciate all you do and of course, tell Cole, Cole hi also for us.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, Cole, Cole is sick, so he couldn't make it up. So.
Great. Council, any questions?
I have some too. Thank you for being here tonight.
You bet.
I was happy to see that the abandoned and blighted property uh legislation was still on our list because I think that's really important for Kingman. I know it's important for a lot of other older communities that are um being brought down by these historic properties that have just been let go. I wanted to ask you about the water legislation, um sort of a two-part question. One, with the new makeup of the legislature and the governor, should we not get the INA protections that we're hoping to hear about soon? Do you, what do you think our chances are to go back to legislature and try again to get something through the state that would protect Kingman's groundwater?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Staley. It is, hopefully that'll happen. The INA issue will happen. If not, it's, it's gonna be as muddled as before. Uh it's, it's just a you can't trust anybody. It's, 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 it's a very difficult terrain on water and it goes down to the very last minute of the legislative session and who's trading for what on the budget for their district. Um it will be ugly again. I do know that um it's probably, if it, if we had a different person elected, it might be a little different. I think the home builders and the cattlemen and others might have had more of an advantage. I, I think uh with an all Republican legislature, I think in this situation, the cities have some more of an opportunity to ensure that they have water uh for their existing uses as opposed to perspect, prospective uses in future developments. That's an opinion.
My other question about groundwater is whether or not you're hearing any other proposed legislation. Not necessarily just about protecting groundwater, but I'm hearing from a lot of my constituents, people are upset that foreign entities are now moving into our state to grow crops that they're then shipping to another country. So they're using our water for a crop that we don't even benefit from. And I am wondering if that, those complaints are trickling up to the Capitol and if you, have you heard of anything maybe being introduced to try to stop that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Staley, yes. I mean, uh Governor-elect Hobbs has been talking about it. Congressman Ruben Gallego has introduced federal legislation. Uh probably won't go anywhere, but um but he introduced it. And we're all talking about the On De Monte, you know, in La Paz County and even other parts of the state. So that, our, our laws are lax for some reason that from long ago and trying to change the law is difficult. But I think people are starting to realize as they see the, the Lake Powell and other places run low, people are demanding answers like, where is our water going? So it'll be interesting to see how strong Governor Hobbs is on this. And for, I think there may be enough Republicans that would cross over and and work with the Democrats in protecting groundwater more around the state than those. But it's interesting because it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat. They have interesting alliances with different stakeholders. Some wanna be with the Sierra Club, some wanna be with the home builders. And it doesn't matter which side of the aisle they're on. It's really, it's a chess game that's, you have no idea who's where based on their color.
It's a complicated issue for sure. Um can I ask one more question?
Of course.
You had mentioned a municipal oversight committee. Um that's something that I have not heard about yet and I wonder if you could give us a little color commentary on that. What, what are your ideas on um what their goals are gonna be?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Staley, um I, it's interesting. I don't, I don't know what specific issue that caused the Republican leadership in the House to create such a committee. You know, we do have the legislation, Senate Bill fourteen eighty-seven from many years ago. Then what that allows for anyone to file a complaint against a city or a county if they, a legislator to file a complaint if they feel they have gone beyond, they're out of bounds, if you will. And so we already have some type of tool that is oversight for uh rogue communities that are, are wanting to do things that don't necessarily fall within state law. I, I don't know why, unless it was something that was demanded of the caucus. You know, there may be uh certain members of the caucus when they were organizing, they said, okay, well, I'll vote for you for the lead, these leadership positions if we create this. And that's all speculation, but that's how we, sometimes we get these committees. It's like, why do we have that? We don't, well, someone had to have a chairmanship and they wouldn't vote for these people unless we did something on this area. So that may be part of it. I'm sure it's not too far from something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Samuel.
Yes, I have questions about the surplus. So we're growing and growing and growing the surplus. And as the surplus keeps building and building and building, do they have, is there been any talk about what to do with that surplus? We'd really like some more HERF funds in our community for roads. I just, is it, is there a talk? Because as that money grows, as that pot grows, they're going to find a way to spend it.
Yes. Mayor and Vice Mayor, uh the surplus is growing and I have a feeling it it will get spent with the new governor. Um she's very much wants to put more money into education. And I, I think we'll probably see a lot of that go towards um education, homelessness, housing issues. As many of, as Mr. Gillette already mentioned, transportation is something that needs to, to be addressed on a statewide, not just in Maricopa County, but statewide, transportation is becoming a real problem. And uh so, but you know, that's funded by the highway, the HERF, the Highway User Revenue Fund. But there may be some people that demand that that um be used over there. And then you have a whole section that say, give it back to the people. We're overtaxed. Excuse me. But keep in mind, if we, if we ever, we have a, we, two-thirds requirement, Proposition one oh eight that passed many years ago. So in order to raise taxes at the state legislature, you need two-thirds of the legislature. And I, it doesn't seem like that's gonna happen with our, our fifty-fifty split. So I'd be, I, I don't think either side would vote to repeal taxes. Who knows? They may do a, a, a rebate or refund. We've seen that over the years as part of a budget vote. We'll give you this, this spending, but you need to return so much to the taxpayers. And then people complain, I can't even buy a hamburger with that. Well, at least it's something, you know. So we're gonna have those kind of discussions, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Council, any other questions for Mr. Dorn?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. We're phone call away and uh we're honored to represent you. Thank you.
Great. Item number eight, announcements by Mayor, Council Members and City Manager. Mr. Foggan, I'll start with you.
All right. Um I've got a little bird list. Thank you, little bird. Just a reminder that we have a few more angel tree tags to be completed. They're hanging out on the Christmas tree. We've done very well, but there's a few more. Oh, there's no more. Oh, they're all filled. Oh, I thought I saw some on there. They all got taken. Okay. We have no more angel tree tags is, is really the, the answer to that. But we do have a box for Toys for Tots that is not filled. And we would love to see that filled. We'd love to see it half-filled. We'd love to see anything in there. So please consider doing Toys for Tots. It's a wonderful program. Just a reminder with uh happy holidays to all of you. We uh will be closed uh the December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas and the day after New Year's, January second. And then finally, uh while you're looking at uh your calendar for next year, you may wanna pencil in the tri-city council meeting. It will be here in Kingman and that will be January eighteenth. Traditionally, that's starts at ten AM. I don't think that's changed. So ten, ten AM, January eighteenth. And that's all the announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Keith? Okay, Cherish?
Um I just wanted to uh announce that, uh the, or not announce, but I wanted to thank um all those that were involved with the Very Merry Christmas Parade. Uh I, it was, it was wonderful to see everybody from the community downtown and just enjoying the holiday season. Um every, there was lots to do, there was lots to eat. So I really uh appreciate everybody from the community that helped and volunteered. Every entry uh of, a float in the parade, um it, it was nice and uh very well attended. So thank you to all those involved.
Thank you, Cherish. Sean? Okay, Jamie?
Um I just have one thing I wanted to remind everybody that the um Kingman Center for the Arts, the Bill Theater is um having a Christmas carol that starts this weekend, the ninth and the tenth, at seven PM at Lee Williams. And next weekend, there's three showings, Friday and Saturday, and also a um matinee show. And you can buy your tickets to a Christmas carol online on their website.
Great. Thank you. Smiley? Okay, Cameron?
Over the weekend, there was a clothe the kid event. Uh I just wanted to take the time to thank the volunteers and sponsors for making Christmas special for children.
Great. Thanks to all of you for those announcements. I do have a couple that I wanna bring up. Tomorrow, December seventh, K R M C, our hospital invites the public to our annual Holiday Open House on Wednesday from four thirty to seven. And various uh hospital departments will participate in the event presenting displays, activities. will participate in the event, presenting displays, activities to educate the public about our news and existing services, and refreshments and cookies, that's the best part, will be served, kids can visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus and receive a special gift while supplies last, and of course, that's at KRMC Medical Center. Then on the ninth and tenth is the Wallop High Winter Wonderland by the county, head up to the Wallop High Mountains to enjoy the seasoned spirit from the comfort and warmth of your vehicle and the park, which, you know, that is a gem that we have, that's one thing I love about Kingman, twenty minutes you can be up in the pine trees, and forty minutes you can be down on the lake. So we are so blessed in this town to have these things close to us. So that's happening on this weekend up in, the county is sponsoring. Of course, Jamie, thanks again for the Christmas carol, mentioning that. And in conjunction with that, to raise monies for Beale Street Theater, they have the mini portrait, Christmas portraits, do you know anything more about that?
I don't, I know that a local photographer, Emily's, but no local.
Lisa McClung also?
Oh, Lisa McClung.
And it's for fifty dollars, it gets two Christmas portraits, and of course, these monies are to benefit the Beale Street Theater renovation project, and of course, another noble cause that we have going on down here in downtown Kingman. And then, of course, December tenth also is a Christmas concert sponsored by Kingman Concert Bands, annual Christmas concert at seven PM on Saturday, hosted by the Kingman Presbyterian Church at twenty twenty-four, twenty-four twenty-five Detroit Avenue. So once again, some great events going on. Then on December seventeenth, we have the Very Merry Cowboy Christmas Cookie Crawl, and the Cookie Crawl will begin at the Kingman Area Chamber of Commerce Office downtown here at three oh nine East Beale between ten AM and four PM. So that's another fun thing to, once again, to support our, support our Kingman merchants downtown, but just look, great local events that we have happening for the holidays. That's all I have, once again, I appreciate all the service that is done in our community, not only by just our staff to start with, our citizens and how we serve each other, and I am glad to be associated with that, and I know we all are, to be Kingman City Council and to serve you. On that, I think there's nothing else, number nine?
I was about to give number nine.
Nope. Counsel requests for future reports and updates. I know, nope, I was going to, Carl, I was getting close. Anything? Okay, yes, Counsel Samley, I mean, Staley, sorry.
That's all right, you do the hell. I would like to request a report on what our WIFA wish list will be, since Mr. Dorn talked about how we need to be aggressively advocating for projects, I'd like to know which ones we're going to put at the top of our list.
Okay, thank you. Any other requests from counsel? Okay, hearing none, I don't think anybody's going to argue, but I think this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, thank you for being here.